Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Special Meeting. I'm very happy to note that we are doing a joint meeting tonight of the Oshkosh Common Council and the Oshkosh Area School District Board. So, the first order of business is to determine whether or not we are in compliance with the open meeting law.
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much, and we'll do a roll call, please, of the school board and then of the city council with Lori Palmary conducting that roll call.
Simaji.
Here.
Right.
Here.
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 Aye.
Burns.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Mayor, would you like to do your roll call for the city council, please?
Yes. If we could call roll for Deputy Mayor Rook Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
And Councilmember McForsy.
Here.
Mayor, what time do you have?
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. This is, as noted, this is a special meeting. It's always special when we get together with the common council and the city council because we have a lot in common, a lot to learn from one another, and so I'm glad that we're able to be in person for this. It's been a while since we've been able to do one of these meetings in person. So, welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education offices, and it's always good to have a full house. So, we've got some visitors as well. With that, we will go on to reports, which is the next order of business, results of the Facility Advisory Committee 2.0, which will be led by Brian Davis, our superintendent, and Dave Gunlock, our deputy superintendent.
Yeah. So, again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We wanted to just give, especially the common council, but certainly give the school board an opportunity, again, to be able to talk through and get some information related to our long-range facility planning. So, that is something that preceded my superintendency here over the last year, and really, Dave is our historian, so I affectionately call him our experienced member, our historian, but has been at the epicenter of a lot of our planning. So, Dave will lead us through a lot of the details. But essentially, what you'll see tonight is a presentation that we presented to the school board on October 12th, and it does two things. One, it brings us up-to-date and refreshes the community related to our long-range school consolidation plan. We're currently in Phase 1 of that plan with the construction of Vell Phillips Middle School and a new elementary school on the Webster site over the next couple of years. But the long-range consolidation, long-range facilities consolidation plan is actually a four-phase plan that the school board approved. And so, we wanted to talk a little bit about Phase 1, but more specifically about Phase 2 and what's coming up on that and what's on the horizon. And then specifically, we had a community group last year work through what we called the Facility Advisory Group 2.0, which was focused more so on co-curricular facilities. So, that's not something that made it into the long-range facilities plan, the four-phase plan, but there was interest around indoor practice facilities, outdoor competition facilities, performing arts center space, and an auditorium. Our four themes that came out from our community group that we met with last year. And so, we've been working kind of on two tracks for the last year. One is continuing on the four-phase plan, but the second one was these extracurricular facilities. So, what we needed to do is be able to bring those two together and figure out how they fit together because it's the same tax base, it's the same district, and we want to make sure that we're in coordination with these two rails that we have. So, the presentation tonight is to talk about maybe some synergy that we can get from those two exercises related to facilities. So, we wanted just an opportunity to show you, you know, what that planning was. Dave can provide a little bit of history to that and then certainly open it up to any questions as we go or at the end of the presentation. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. As Dr. Davis said, we're going to look a little bit at the FAC 2.0 process, the review of their recommendations. Sort of, we'll start with sort of the end in mind and talk a little bit about that. We'll briefly look at the FAC 1.0 district master plan and what that really is set to do for all district facilities. We'll look at a summary of Phase 1 work really quickly. We'll look at a summary of what Phase 2 work could be, and then how do these things all fit together at the end? So, this is the results of several months of the Facility Advisory Committee 2.0. They meant to look at those various co-curricular facilities, as Dr. Davis said, and they came up with four core recommendations, in no specific order. One of them was for an indoor multipurpose facility. That's about 120-yard indoor turf field, fieldhouse, and spectator seating, fitness training, locker rooms, et cetera. And then we estimated the cost for all of these in terms of $20.27. The reason for $20.27 is the way the district's financing the existing debt obligations, we would have an opportunity in 2026 where it would be advantageous to go to referendum again. Obviously, these types of expensive projects would require referendum support. So, there's an indoor practice facility, multipurpose. There's also an aquatic center need because we realize our pools are out of date and quite old and needed replacement. So, they talked about putting together an aquatic center with a 50-meter pool with diving, spectator seating, water therapy pools, splash pad locker rooms, et cetera. The cost of that would be somewhere in the $40 million range. Another need was a performing arts center at North High School. As you know, we have Alberta Kimball Auditorium, which is an awesome. An orchestra pit, a lobby, some dressing rooms. The cost for that would be around $26 to $27 million in $20.27. And then the fourth item was outdoor competition and practice. That would be a soccer football stadium, baseball, softball fields, and playground spaces. The cost of that would be somewhere in the low $20 million range. So, the cost of all of these projects would be somewhere in the $146 to $154 million range if you were doing it all at one time. We don't think that's going to happen all at one time, but you never know if Bill Gates or Elon Musk takes a liking to Oshkosh. We could take care of this really quick. But for the most part, these are the four projects. We were very, very pleased with the work of the committee. They spent a lot of time trying to figure out the details of each of these and processing what the needs of the community are. The other thing that I would point out is originally, years ago, we looked at doing each of these for each high school, and it became really apparent really quick that that would, A, double the cost, but we really didn't need to do that. We felt that, and the board weighed in on that earlier, that the two high schools could share these facilities. So, better to have one state-of-the-art facility shared by both high schools than to try and do this basically twice. So, now looking at the original Facility Advisory Committee, the consolidation plan that was board-approved, I think, 2018, 2019 timeframe, that, as Dr. Davis said, that's based on four phases. The first phase we're in the middle of now, and that is focused on basically creating, going from five schools on three sites down to two schools on two sites. So, we're taking Merrill Middle, Webster Middle, Merrill Elementary, Webster Elementary, and Washington. So, there's three elementaries and two middles, and converting that down to Vell Phillips Middle on the, next to the current Merrill site, and then the new elementary school, and we're in the process of picking a name for the new elementary school, so we won't call it New Elementary School, but having a new Northside Elementary School on the Webster Stanley site. So, that will allow us to consolidate down in Phase 1. So, we would be then left with Oaklawn Elementary, Reed Elementary, E. Cook, and the new elementary on the north side. We'd have Vell Phillips serving the north side, and obviously, those students would all go to North High School. So, that is Phase 1. That's what we're in the middle of now, and we're slated to open Vell Phillips next fall in 2023, and we're slated to open the new elementary school the following year in fall of 2024. So, that's going very well. Just a narrative of some of the other Phase 1 work in addition to what we just talked about. We did some pretty substantial HVAC, plumbing, electrical, roofing, et cetera on the elementary schools you see there on the left. We did some safety and security improvements at Trager Elementary and Middle, E. Cook, Lakeside, and South Park. And what that really represents is creating, largely creating, secure vestibules as people enter the facilities. So, it really helps us secure our facilities. Planned for the summer of 2023, this upcoming summer, we'll be doing the same thing at Oakwood, Reed, North High, and West High. So, those are the projects that will round out the 2020 referendum that was passed. Here's just a couple of artists rendering. If you've driven by the Vell Phillips site, you'll see it's going really, really quick now. They plan on buttoning that up for, before the snow flies so that we can continue to work on the interior of the building. On the right side of the screen, you're seeing the artists rendering for the design of the new elementary school, which is about three-quarters of the way, maybe a little more, through the design phase, and we're getting prepared to go out to bid for that shortly. So, if you look at Phase 2, so that covers Phase 1. If you look at Phase 2, it does a very similar thing on the west side of town. So, it focuses in, in Phase 2, on South Park. So, we would replace South Park with a new South Park Middle School. It would be very similar to the services offered by Vell Phillips, and that would be constructed onsite. We would also retain Carl Trager Middle School, as we do right now. And then our elementary schools would be Oakwood, Carl Trager, Franklin, Jefferson, and Lakeside on the west side. So, if you look, that would allow us to do some west-side middle school consolidation. We would replace South Park, as I said, but we would convert Perry Tipler into a professional development center likely and serve some other needs. The west-side elementary consolidation, we would expand Oakwood to accommodate around 600 students. That's the same size as the new elementary school on the north side. We'd expand Carl Trager to do the same. We'd expand Franklin to do the same, and we would convert Shapiro, the existing Shapiro site, to a 4K center. So, all of our youngest learners would be able to be served at one site, which would have some pretty significant instructional advantages. We would then close and seek to sell potentially Roosevelt Elementary School because we would no longer need that site, very similar to the Washington site. The earliest potential referendum for that, as I stated, would be around November 2026. So, how does this all fit together? Before I do that, let me, let me just kind of lay out, in case anybody was wondering, what are the last two phases? Phase 3, by the way, would be the replacement of West High, and Phase 4 would be the remodel or replacement of North High at some point down the road. Those would be the final phase. The reason we came up with all four phases is as we began to look at Phase 1, we got a lot of feedback from the Oshkosh community is that they weren't, they really, before they voted on anything like Phase 1, they wanted to see the end of the story. So, they wanted to see the beginning, the middle, and the end, and how, what was all going to happen before they went ahead and approved the first phase. So, that's why we articulated all of those. So, this gets us back to the FAC 2 projects and how do they fit in the consolidation timeline? One of the things that was, the recommendation we made on October 12th was that we move the performing arts center at North High into Phase 2. The other three projects would be to be determined. Obviously, there's going to be a mixture of public funding, hopefully some donation, hopefully some other fundraising that could all help us accelerate those projects. But right now, we felt the one, the one need that could be addressed the quickest and was very high priority was providing some performing arts capability for the students on the north side of town. So, what that would do is it would add to those other pieces. So, we would, you know, do the South Park piece, we'd make the west-side elementary consolidation, and we would recommend adding in a performing arts center, all tied into a Phase 2 potential referendum in November of 2026.
Which is really right around the corner.
It's getting scary how, yeah, people said, people are very impatient, especially if you look at our 4K sites that are spread around and so many sites. They would, if they could accelerate the time, I'm sure they would love to do that. But we keep reminding them, it's about as soon as we could do that because we have to finish building a middle school, we have to still build an elementary school and get all of that going, and that includes boundary redraws and a whole host of fun for the Board of Education that we have to go through first and get all those decisions done. And then, you're right, we're going to be kicking into the preparation for things like this. So, that's a perfect segue into the next steps. So, the Board of Education is looking at aligning the FAC 2.0 recommendations with their consolidation plan. We presented that on the 12th. We're going to continue with our community engagement. We're going to continue the district financial planning to hopefully set it up so it makes great financial sense to go in November of '26 and develop community partnerships and set up fundraising and a donation process. The one thing that we're very keenly aware of is that people do not just hand you money. They will not give you money without a plan, but if you have a really good plan that they support, that meets the needs that they have, we've found that the Oshkosh community has been very generous and very supportive. So, that is all of that. That's, that's the last four or five years of work in a nutshell. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Do you by chance have a map that shows what that after Phase 4 looks like in terms of the locations and the schools?
Not on that one, but I can get it. I can, this is why I always have a computer body.
The reason I guess I'm asking is, it sounds like with those consolidations, that there's kind of like this east-west divide, which is kind of strange that South Park would be considered west. But in any event, if there's equal number of schools on kind of east and west, but there's significantly more population on the east side, I guess I just kind of was curious about a kind of a visual of how that works.
Yeah, I can get you, I can get you that. I don't have it on this computer right now, but we do have, what we did is we ended up putting sort of a post-Phase 2, post-Phase 3, putting the dots and laying them out. We have that, and that was one of the key conversations we had early on is what quantity of students were there on the north side versus the west side? And we actually started that conversation one step earlier. We had to come up with, what is the ideal size of a school? You know, because that's really what, how it all began. And we, we found that the ideal size of a school is about a four-to-five track, or I'm sorry, a three-to-four-track elementary school, which is potentially 450 to 600 kids. That's why those numbers of capacity for the new elementary and the others, it's no accident that they're sitting at 600 students, okay? The, for the middle school, it was somewhere in the 800-student range, which is coincidentally what, what Vell Phillips is, is it's 800 students. So, those were sort of the ideal school size. Our, our high schools are already set up well. You know, they're, they're sort of at the right size right now. And that's where that conversation began, and then we had to figure out, okay, which facilities do we let go of? Which facilities do we put more money into? And that's, that's why the board originally decided Merrill's got to be the first, first place because there were, I don't remember the exact number, but I think it was in excess of $50 million of just repairs on those five facilities. And the repairs don't improve the facility. All they really did was repair windows, roofs, and such. So, it was kind of, it was kind of, that was the greatest need first. Right on the heels of that was South Park, and that's why South Park was the second piece. But the conversation then centered on, are we increasing enrollment or are we declining enrollment? So, we had an enrollment projection done in 2017. We are declining enrollment, like many districts in Wisconsin, and it showed that we would decline into these sizes, and that has been spot-on, accurate so far. We are down somewhere in the low 9,000 range. At one time, we were over 10,000. So, this is, the one thing we have noticed, as we looked at the, I gave an enrollment report to the board, I don't know, about a month ago, the declining enrollment that we are experiencing is going right into where we're consolidating. So, it is lining up exactly where we thought it would happen. It's happening right there. So, we should end up right-sizing the district in terms of facility sizes, and we should stabilize right around at that 9,000-student mark. So...
Does that include the parochial schools downsizing, or is it just our public schools?
That's just our public schools.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, from a board perspective, we had received an update on all of our facilities, I think it was in the fall of 2017, from Brian Associates that showed that we needed over $100 million worth of upgrades when it came to tuckpoining, roofs, whatever. It had nothing to do with improving the quality of instruction. And so, that led the board to say, we want a long-range plan to take a look at what we need to do to upgrade facilities. And so, the board directed administration to prepare a long-range plan, which resulted in this four-phase plan that Dave outlined tonight, which was approved by the board in January 2020, leading to the November 2020 referendum.
I don't know where we're at for agenda and everything, and I'll, I'll keep this short, but we're consolidating a lot of schools, and nothing fills a void in a community once that, once that school moves out. So, we just beg you to please work with us to help, help us fill those voids when, when these schools do close. And I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be our biggest problem to tackle when this happens. So, that's really the only request I have, so...
Well, and we're working with, one of, one of the next school that we're going to close would be like Washington. You know, once, we'll move those students into the new elementary school, and we're setting up a meeting. We've already talked with the Neighborhood Association during COVID, so we weren't in person, but we, we're setting up a meeting with the Neighborhood Association. We want to talk with them about that because I know the board has been interested in, in the Neighborhood Association's recommendation as to what to do with that site. I'm sure, I'm sure they're going to have some good ideas with that, and that's, that's part of the, the healing process, I think, when you go through something like this, is what do you want done with that site? And we're really looking forward to meeting with them and talking about that. We wanted to wait until we were, because we're still two years out from that. We wanted to wait till we were a little closer, but yeah, that's, that's something we're definitely working on.
No, encouraged to hear that, just from my own personal point of view on that one. Very encouraged to hear that. Interested in the community engagement part of this. I know you guys have done well recently on those efforts in, in terms of just getting the referents passed and getting the messaging out. But Mr. Miller's right, you know, there's a void that's left, and just having a strong partnership, that was something that, that we asked for and just renewing that several years ago between the two boards, but then, you know, allowing staffs to form those strong partnerships so that Mark and his staff, Economic Development, they have that ability to, to know where you guys are going. They know the partnerships, they've got those relationships and being able to help smoothly fill in those, those voids and those gaps that are left.
Yeah, we certainly expect to do that, and I think that's one of the real advantages of having a long-range plan. You know, we can have these conversations years ahead of time because it, a lot of this work does take years to be able to develop, and so when we get there, we can have a smooth landing, so...
And I would just add to, I have some of the councilmembers concerned that, you know, we highly, highly desire coming together and working on things due to, obviously, there are some transportation, and I know we have transportation later on the agenda, but more specifically, you know, what, what obviously that does with traffic and getting students to and from in those, those new locations and the concentration or the, you know, significant increase in the number of students at those locations.
That's going to be a big part of the boundary redraw process. Drew Nihans has been working with myself, and we have, I forget the name of the firm. Do you remember the name of that firm that we're doing with, that's working on the safe routes? Basically, what...
Same one that did the traffic study.
Yeah, the traffic study. They have a cool acronym, and I never get it, which is terrible. That's it. Yeah. Terrible for a tech guy not to get an acronym. But the, they have a really interesting process where they analyze all the routes, and they give each one a safety score, and that is going to be an improvement over last time when the board had info. They're going to, actually going to get information in terms of a score for the different routes and how the boundary should be redrawn to keep the, keep the students as close to the schools as possible. So, there, there's a whole bunch of information that they provide that helped us design those that we didn't have last time. Last time, we, we, we had dots on a map, and, and we use technology for it, but it was basically electronic dots on a map, and they had to redraw it that way. So, that's nice, having that additional information.
May I ask a question? Mayor Palmer, Pal, sorry, I'm still leaving out Palmary. You mentioned that there's a higher population on the east side in the city of Oshkosh?
Well, a higher concentration of population, population density.
Yeah, that makes sense. I had never really thought of that, so I appreciate that you pointed that out. So, that struck me, I'm like, oh. One thing, though, I think, is it's different for the school district because two of our schools aren't located in the city of Oshkosh, they're located in the town of Algoma and Blackpool. So, I drew my own little map, and I noticed that it ends up being pretty even in the city of Oshkosh. So, that is interesting. I'm glad that you pointed that out.
Even number, but not necessarily even population served.
Yeah, but I mean, the buildings. The buildings, numbers are about the same on both sides in Oshkosh, except blocked out with the town of Algoma and Blackpool.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Is there any more, are there any more comments or questions on this topic? We're at about the one-third of the way through the meeting mark, and we have two more agenda items that we'd like to cover tonight, so I don't want to cut anyone off, but I want to make sure that we have time to adequately cover the other two agenda items. Anyone else on that topic? All right, then, let's move on to the educational programs at the museum. Sarah Phillips is joining us tonight from, as the new director of the Oshkosh Public Museum, so we welcome you, Sarah, to probably your first joint meeting of these two boards.
It is. It is. Thank you so much for having me. I promise, this is the only slide without a picture. I just wanted to introduce myself to those of you that I have not yet met. I'm a relatively new citizen of Oshkosh. I came here about a year ago and have been welcomed into the community wholeheartedly. My background is in historical research, public history, and I have a grad certificate from George Washington in museum collections management, so I've been deeply seeped in the museum world for quite some time. My, my previous role was curator of collections and exhibitions for the state of Idaho, and in my spare time, I'm an American Alliance of Museums National Accreditation reviewer. So, I'm really excited to talk about all of the different things that we're looking forward to in the future with the programs that we're building at the Oshkosh Public Museum. I know it may have been a little while since some folks have been to the public museum, and I'm not, I'm not going to read this. This is the mission of the Oshkosh Public Museum, but what it boils down to is preserving and promoting Oshkosh and the Lake Winnebago region. We strive to do that through a number of different avenues, and one of those main avenues is through education programming. Real quick, just a year in review, we hosted three different major exhibitions this past year, and into our menu of programming, we have started Family Discovery Days, which is an all-ages educational program that's free to everyone who attends. We were fortunate enough to launch this, I believe, in March of this year, and we've had pretty overwhelming community response, taking part in different hands-on activities. Typically, those are activities that support the temporary exhibitions that we have, but sometimes it'll be supported by the collections and things that are in line with the mission of the museum itself. Also, this year, we have really focused in on creating a robust education program. Our focus has been on creating meaningful regional kindergarten through K-12 activities and building out what that program area looks like. We also serve local colleges and universities, so Ripon College, we've had lots of UWO classes come through, serving adult learners, so we've added a number of different enrichment programs specific to adult learners within the community as well. And as part of our education program, being strategic and weaving in different cultural events like Dia de los Muertos, we're really excited to start looking at those different initiatives and how we can incorporate cultural events into our planning. So, our foundation for the future is growing very strong. I think one of the biggest things that we are looking forward to is not only growing the exhibitions within the museum, but shifting the perception and the relevancy of the museum within the community, and we're kind of doing that within three different avenues. The first is through Deep Roots Growing City. So, this is an exhibition that'll open in 2026, but over the next year, we're really laying the groundwork to research curriculum, different avenues of sharing lived experiences with tribes, and making sure that we're continuing the story that we started in People of the Waters. Waters. So that is, when you enter the museum, that's the primary exhibit that you see right as you come in. Deep Roots Growing City will continue the story of the region forward through time all the way up to present day. That content is being created with different community stakeholders, tribal leaders and community members to make sure that we're really hitting the target. To be able to install Deep Roots Growing City, we need to make some modifications to our own building. The first exhibition that'll go in that modified space is celebrating the museum's centennial in 2024. That exhibit will be focused on the Sawyer legacy and the gift of the home to the community and the citizens of Oshkosh. It's also a kickoff for introducing a new interpretive plan for the Sawyer home itself. One of the things that I am very excited about within the museum is just how special the home itself is, and it's kind of been under our noses this whole time. The Tiffany interiors within the Sawyer home, so if you think of the stained glass on the grand staircase, the tapestries, the archway when you first enter the building, the woodwork and all of its finishes, put the museum in an extraordinarily rare seat in the history of American art. We are quite literally only one of two original Tiffany commissions to known, known to still exist. 100% of the work in the Sawyer home was designed exclusively for the Sawyer home here in Oshkosh. It does not exist anywhere else in the world. So no other museum has the collections to explore this region's anthropological perspectives, give a voice to local indigenous people, explore the industry and business that built our modern day economy, and talk about the unique history of American arts through the lens of Tiffany, all in one place, all at one time. So the public museum is in a very unique and fortunate position right now. But to do all of this right and to make sure that we're meeting the goals, not only of the museum, but of the city, we need to have an educator to ensure that that content is aligned with standards and curriculum to really grow that education program. Over the past 10 years, over the past 10 years, the city has really invested a great deal of money into our exhibition program and our development, but in that decade, we have not had a museum educator. What makes this position really unique is that we need to be able to reach teachers where they're at in the classroom. A museum needs to have a solid understanding of curriculum standards, formal and informal learning systems, and the ability to translate all of that into useful materials. So to advance the museum and to maximize the financial investment that the city has already made, we need someone who can approach informal learning through the lens of shared authority and inquiry-based learning itself. This educator would do more than just facilitate field trips. They would research curriculum and standards, develop programming, and optimize the performance of our exhibits for our stakeholders. I just want to take a punctuation pause and share one of the things that I think makes the museum really great, and it's something that everyone should be very proud of. And that is that we provide free field trips to all OASD students. That should quite literally be a point of pride for everyone in this room because it's highly unusual for a museum to provide free field trips. I have been to museums, I've visited museums that sometimes families will be required to show an EBT card to show that they're on assistance, will only offer free admission to Title I schools. So I think it should be a point of community pride that we're offering this to students within the school district in a very equitable, accepting way that regardless of a student's socioeconomic status, they can come to the museum and they can get something from that trip. But even with those free field trips, the classes were not coming to the museum. That's because our exhibits and the materials that we were creating didn't align with grade level standards and didn't support the lessons that were being taught in the classrooms. So we know what happens if we don't have an educator. For 10 years, we've struggled to have a voice with our school districts and have a seat at the educational table, in conversations with different school district officials. That became very clear that the museum had lost touch with the formal education system. We've lost out on serving over 10,000 students in this area alone. So looking forward to the future, we have really rededicated staff resources to focus in on improving our educational program at the museum, and we have really accomplished a great deal. So you can see some of our onsite resources that we have. We've worked hard with the school district to align field trips to grade level standards. Currently, People of the Waters and Memories and Dreams, excuse me, align with those standards. And two future exhibits that will be aligning with curriculum and state standards as well. We also have created additional classroom resources. We've got inquiry kits that are free for teachers to check out, to bring into their classrooms, specific to grades three through five. You can see the topics that are included there. We also have created complete lesson plans based on primary source materials and exhibits within the museum, but you don't have to be in the museum to utilize these. We have included standards and indicators, assessment, delivery, kind of everything that a teacher may need to be successful in delivering these lessons. And we've also incorporated virtual field trips to meet the needs of middle school and high school classes with their more complicated bell schedules, to make sure that older kids also are getting the resources from the museum that they may need in their classrooms as well. And we've provided families that participate in virtual field trips within the school district free passes for in-person visits to remove that economic barrier. So moving forward, we kind of have this big group of things that is all coming together to create the museum as a vibrant place for the community to call home. All of these things that our education program has started doing, I think is going to help serve our programs and our mission extraordinarily well and begin to move the museum forward.
Thank you.
I'm just wonderful. Thanks. It's my encore.
Kind of takes your breath away, everything that's going on. That's great. My question is, are there plans to take some of these exhibitions out to the public? One of the things that I notice about the public museum is it's a relatively small footprint for a city this size. And so bringing people to the museum may be challenging. So are there, are there ways to take some sort of programs to, for example, service clubs or retirement communities or other groups for educational purposes that might then draw them into the library once they, they saw the great things that are happening there?
Absolutely. I think one of the things that, as we build that educational program, we can start targeting adult education avenues as well. Just as we have those inquiry kits for elementary age students, those could be developed for adult education as well because I think part of, part of one of the wonderful things that a museum does is kind of take these lessons and, and learning in books and creates a really tangible part of history that you can understand in a completely different way. So creating those experiences for somebody regardless of their age, I think, is a wonderful service that the museum could provide. In order to do that, I would want to make sure that those are all aligning with the exhibits, like you mentioned, and the collections that we had to make sure that we're meeting those needs, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Solaji.
Yeah, I have a question about the inquiry kits. Would those be access to classrooms or like at home or schools or how are those kind of let out?
They can be checked out. They're all self-contained. They can get checked out for free at the museum, so you pick them up. They're designed for classroom use, but for instance, if a homeschool group wanted to use them, then they're certainly available for those to be used as well. And they're, they're really fun. I mean, I thought about bringing one today, but I knew we were limited on time. But the, the pieces and the materials in those are useful regardless of where you're at.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
I just have a question about scheduling and accessibility prompted by Dr. Hursa's question. So the school district kind of recently changed to this model of having that, I believe it's like the full Friday off once a month for students, for in-service teacher, and I'm probably using the wrong language.
That's right.
It's close. It's very good.
I guess the question being is, do the hours accessible and the free access marry up between that new schedule where students would have access to the museum, for example, on breaks, you know, during the holidays or on these Fridays each month?
We would be, I don't know what those days fall, but Fridays were open until 4:30. So certainly if that was an in-service day or a day that students had off because of a holiday, chances are we would be open and welcome them in.
But they only have the free access if they go through the virtual one first, is that right? Or is that all the time for students?
It's all the time for students.
Okay.
It sounds like one very easy fix would be for the district to make sure that the public library and other city entities have a copy of the school district calendar so you know when those Fridays are, and maybe you could market or target either to bring teachers in or to bring students and families in. And that would be very easy to share our district calendar with you and the rest of the folks around the table.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it does take a little digging to find that on the website, I have to say.
It is there.
I know it's there, but just a little digging.
Okay.
Sarah, in terms of the inquiry kits, and Sarah tested them on me to make sure they could pass third grade because that was my limit, but I did, I, I advanced to fourth grade. I did quite well, thanks Brian. But Sarah, if you could tell the story about how those got developed, because in the absence of a curator, educator, you did get that done, and that was some cooperation with the school district. So if you could talk about that a little bit for everybody so they were aware of that.
Sure, yeah. Tanya Schmidt is the social studies curriculum coordinator for the school district, and Dr. Davis can talk a little bit more about her role. But the district has been really generous with her time as we've looked to find ways to create relevancy within the museum and find classroom materials that could be useful. She has really been key in creating those activities. So she looked at all of the different social studies standards in elementary school for the different grades. I'll use fur trapping as an example. That is such a perfect avenue to create like a hands-on educational kit. And so with her experience combined with the materials that the museum has available for hands-on learning and that kind of thing, she was able to develop those kits for teachers to check out. Part of that is because we want to be able to provide resources to teachers who can't come on field trips, also in case of a pandemic or, you know, anything else that might happen in our world today. We wanted to make sure that there is more than one line of reaching out to educators and students, so.
And just to follow up, just on Tanya Schmidt's position in social studies, that's where I see when you're, you know, presenting the idea of the curator of education, I think that partnership can be really powerful. And I think accelerating our cooperation is really dependent on having somebody, on our side, we have Tanya who can speak education and do her best with, with, you know, the museum work. But if we can get somebody on the museum side that speaks museum and those two people can talk together and be able to do some real coordination, I think the sky's the limit, you know, for what we could do on professional development days and holidays, and then just ramping up just the current programming that we have. So to me, that's a, that's an exciting opportunity for us to really solidify that partnership and have people that can really deliberately make that move.
I was going to ask, I don't know if the school district still does, maybe this has changed since they do the Fridays, but the, like the half-day Wednesdays, I don't know if those still happen anymore.
So that's changed. So yeah, we moved to the Fridays. Yep, that, that was the move that we made.
So then this might not supplement, but one suggestion or idea I had was trying to find ways to maybe partner with the CLC programs that they have, because I know they're always looking for ways to, you know, do new education programs and things like that. But that's typically, that's after school, so I don't know how late the museum is open, but perhaps something to look at.
Yeah. I think finding all the new avenues is something that we definitely want to explore. I know, I know the conversation of creating a curator of education position is something that's very foreign to a lot of people because curator of education sounds, it sounds like a made up position in a lot of regards, but in the museum field, it's a very standard position. And what that person would be responsible for is finding all of those avenues, working with local nonprofits, working with education groups, senior groups, all of those different kind of nooks and crannies to make sure that there is no underserved area in a community and that we're really able to focus in, in a meaningful way that's going to increase the museum's relevancy and also expand the reach of the education system. One of the things the museum does is not just serve the public schools, but our responsibility is also to private schools and to universities. And so being able to work in a very formalized way so far with the school district and with Tanya, I think has created a very positive ripple effect, and keeping that momentum is really important, so.
And I guess I just bring up to, to build on to Mr. Davis's comments that the city council or the city and the school district have this historic partnership with the school liaison officers where there's some shared financial responsibility. And, and I guess, you know, my question is, is obviously we're all dealing with, you know, significant priorities with budgets. Just kind of curious about what that exploration might look like. You know, if our council is unable to fully fund this curator, you know, are there opportunities for partnership with, you know, the school district and/or UW-Oshkosh, maybe even some of the private schools to share in that position?
So, yeah, I mean, my feedback was I think, you know, our commitment is really Tanya Schmidt's position in that, in that social studies curriculum position. So I think we have it in place. I would, I don't want to cast responsibility to others, but I would say UW-Oshkosh and our private partners to be able to, you know, have, look at some partnerships there because again, we, we have a partner, you know, that we currently employ that would plug right in, you know, to this position. So I think that would make sense.
Is that full-time dedicated for this purpose?
Yes. Well, for social, I mean, it's, she's for social studies, yes, social studies curriculum alignment, yeah. Yeah. And so that's a major part of her job is be able to do community outreach to the museum and other places. So that's where, that's where, where we would have that investment already set.
And it would, it would be a discussion with the museum board as well. So if there was a shared financial responsibility, how the board would want to approach that. We do have a UWO professor who could probably provide some insight to that on our board and kind of explore the different avenues so that, that way it's kind of a shared responsibility.
Anyone else? I think you've.
I guess out of curiosity, because it's important to utilize things and give kids access to things such as the museum, since the curriculum has started to be better aligned, has that increased participation? And by how much, I guess? Because I think that's important to all of us in the room to know that by doing these things, how much more access is being granted to how many, you know, additional students?
So since we've aligned the curriculum, all third grade classes have started coming to the museum. So just within the past couple months and looking into the end of the next school year, we'll be serving close to 1,000 different schoolchildren coming through, and that's OASD and other local school districts combined. And that is quite literally all through the work that has been accomplished over the last month, or, excuse me, last few months, so.
Awesome. That sounds great. Thank you for your work.
So Sarah joined us roughly a year ago. I remember it was right about budget time when you, when you, you visited.
Yep.
Prior to Sarah joining us and some changes even at the school district too, there was no attendance from, there was no partnership with, with the elementary schools specifically. And so like she just mentioned, you know, it's, it's basically been very recently that with those changes, the interest level, the partnerships, you know, reforming and solidifying, that we've been able to see some, a big uptick in the kids, kids coming in. That's, that's a cool thing, you know, that, that it is free and that they can all come and. a cool thing, you know, that it is free and that they can all come. And getting them in there is pretty awesome. So if they don't get in now, are they ever going to?
Yeah. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Anyone else? All right, then, let's go on to the third topic, Go Transit Student Busing Revenue Agreement with Jim Collins. Jim seems to be an ongoing and steady agenda item every time we get together, so I always look forward to what Jim's gonna share, because he's the steady force here when we get together.
All right, well, I'll take this. So I know most of you, but for anybody I don't know, I'm Jim Collins. I'm the transportation director for the city. So I oversee Go Transit, which is our public bus system, as well as some other areas as well. And then I have Steve Tomasek, who's our transit operations manager. So he helps oversee the operations. And then we have Sergeant Nelson, who oversees the school resource officers. So the three of us get to present on this. This probably isn't as entertaining as the museum or as cool or anything, but I'll do my best here.
You got any kids for us to take home?
Yeah. So I just have, I just got this laid out more as a discussion. So anyway, so we'll talk a little bit about the public transportation and, but first of all, I just want to say that facilities plan is wonderful. I think that's long overdue. And I do, with my, one of the other hats, I wear, I do some of the city's traffic engineering, so I have been involved in some of those different projects with the consultant, along with our planning and engineering. And Mayor Palmary is right, though, just keep us involved in those, because transportation is very important with those facilities. And as some of you know, we're dealing with transportation issues, you know, down the road from some facilities that we wish we would have addressed upfront. So keep us involved with those for all modes, and that includes what I'm gonna talk about here, which is transit. But like I said, we're the public transit agency, so some of you were on the board back when this program started a few years ago. It's been talked about, I've been in this position eight years, and it's been talked about probably for all those eight years, if not before that. So we did start this program back in 2019. So I just wanted to kind of tell the story. First, I'm asked, how's it going? So I'll tell you a little bit about the good and the bad. The good is, it's, well, the bad is it started during COVID, right? So that was hard to really tell anything. It was a weird time. It was a strange time to start. So we did amend the agreement with the school board back, so that it was pushed some of the funding and things back a year to allow some extra time to get the program going. Then it ramped up slowly last year. So that's the first thing I'm gonna talk about, is our ridership. It is going gangbusters. So we've, we're on pace to have a record month this month. We're probably at about, and Steve says I'm a little bit conservative with this, but a little over 17,000 rides for this month, which is the highest it's ever been. So it is very successful. We did add a tripper bus to a second bus to Oshkosh North that was at the second semester of last year. So we added some extra capacity. So when we started this program, one of our concerns was, well, what happens if the demand exceeds our capacity? So that did happen, and we're still kind of dealing with that a little bit now. Originally, we estimated maybe about 93,000 rides a year. We're currently on pace to do about 147,000 rides this year. So obviously, that's about 58% over what we projected, and it's about 70% over 2021. So from a ridership standpoint, it's doing really well. So there is a demand there. People are using it. I think that was one of the goals when this program was, was rolled out. But then some of the issues that have come with that are, we are having some issues with some student behaviors and things like that, which we have been addressing aggressively, along with the help of the school resource officers. And I'll let, Steve can just take a couple minutes and tell you kind of how that's going.
Yeah, I guess the key thing to remember is we're a public transit agency that has a revenue sharing agreement with the school, allows kids to ride for free. All of our runs are available to the public, right? And we have to bear that in mind. We've had some issues this year from, ranging from everything, from just disruptive, poor behavior to middle school students assaulting someone trying to get to work, to borderline riot, we'll say, 25, 30 kids in a fight on the bus. Came very, was shocking to see. I think a couple of people have watched the video. We aggressively took steps at north to reduce ridership at north to 40 kids a bus. We have staffing issues, basically a good portion of the time, either myself or our driver supervisor out there, basically monitoring the kids getting on the bus, basically making sure they're seated. The issues are, when we have these kinds of issues, I mean, we're a 40-foot bus. We've got people trying to get to and from work. We've had instances where, earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday, we've got a mom and two small children with some grocery bags. This happens a lot, and she had no idea what bus she had, I think she was getting on, and just a horror on her face with, you know, all the kids getting on. So we definitely have had some staffing issues, and we really need to focus on the fact that our drivers need to be focused on the road. I mean, you've got kids on the bus, but we need to be watching where we're going for the rest of the community and what's going on there. So we, I'll leave it at that for the time being. But there's definitely, we've definitely had some, some serious concerns of what's going on the bus this year, and we've had some last year, but this year's really kind of come to a head. We're only two months into the school year.
Yeah, so, so those are some of the challenges we've had. And like Steve said, we were aggressively addressing them, along with the help of the school resource officers. And like Steve talked about, one, one thing we did was limit the capacity per bus to seated capacity so that drivers can better monitor what's going on. And that has left, some students then have to wait 30 minutes for the next bus, but, you know, that's all we could do to try to control the situation. And so we're having that, that challenge of managing that. And we talked to our peer with Sheboygan over the last month or so, and they've had, they have a similar program. Theirs is paid for 100% by the school district. But anyway, it's the same deal. It's a revenue sharing agreement where students can ride for free. So if we renew this relationship, we have a couple ideas of how we might be able to address that. I mean, one thing that we need to be able to do, and we have done it to some degree, is to be able to suspend students that are causing problems, so that A, there has to be a consequence, and B, we have to get the word out that we're not going to tolerate that. So we have been able to successfully just suspend a few students, you know, working with the school resource officer. And that's one way that we can address that.
Jim, if you could clarify the term suspension, because that is a different meaning of the school.
So they would be suspended from riding Go Transit.
From the bus, yeah. Yeah. And one of the clear markers, as we've gone through the last year, is that our jurisdiction from a school standpoint for school consequences, once students are on the bus, like, it's, it's like being off of school property. So we've had some situations that, that have been kind of, you know, on the bus that we've had to work through. And we've been told very clearly from our council that that is, you know, that would be beyond the school bounds as far as consequences in school. So thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know what that situation is, but I have been told by other cities how they've, how they've worked together with the school district is that they see it as, because they have a revenue agreement, that is an extension of the school property being on the bus. And I'm not a lawyer, and I don't pretend to be, so I have no idea how that works. But anyway, that's what some people have told us. Other cities work with it that way. But anyway, the, however that works out, either through the school resource officer or through the school district, we have to be able to manage that behavior and have some consequences, one way or another. And the other way we could do that potentially in the future is Sheboygan, for instance, they've had some instances that were way worse than what we're dealing with over the last year. But they have, with their pass program, is they require the students to register, and then they get a pass through the transit agency. So they use their phone as the pass, and they have an ID associated with that, so they track it, so that if they do need to suspend someone, they can suspend that pass. And then those that don't have a phone go to their, the school, and they get a pass from them that they take to the transit agency voucher, and they redeem that for a physical pass. So that's another way. We don't currently have that. We have something similar. We do have virtual fairs, but the company we work with, we don't know if they have that ability yet. But anyway, that's something we could look into as well. But the bottom line is just some way to identify those students and suspend them from our service. Generally, depending on how severe it is, we, you know, if it's something minor, they might get suspended from this bus for 30 days. If something more major, it might be 90 days. But, and that's from what Sheboygan's told me, that's worked really well for them, and it has reduced greatly the number of incidents they've had. So that's kind of, you know, where we're going with that, is we just, our school resource officers have been great to work with, and we've kind of been relying on them to be the liaison between us and the staff at the school. We have had some communications with the staff at the school as well. But that's, since some of these issues become more of a law enforcement issue, that's, I think, appropriate. But somehow, we just have to be able to identify and address those issues, so that, like Steve said, so that we're safe for, not only for your students and everyone's students, but also for the general public, as well as the drivers. And we do have, that's another issue we're dealing with, like everyone else, we have a staff shortage, right? So not only are we limited the number of drivers, we haven't been able to hire enough of them. But we are also, we have, for instance, we have a tripper route, and the number of volunteers to do that, even though it's overtime, has dwindled because of some of this. They don't want to deal with that. They're, you know, they're bus drivers, they're not security guards, and they don't, they can't handle it. They're one driver that's dealing with 40-plus kids on a bus, and it's, it's difficult. So that, that's the challenge is. So once, we need to get that under better control.
We're, we're kind of stuck in the middle. So that, as you mentioned, the school's perspective is, it's not on school grounds, you know, it's, you're not really near parameters of handling. But from the police perspective, you know, they handle anything from the judicial, from, you know, from a legal perspective. But from a bus, we have very limited resources. And what's happening is, the poor behavior that's going on the bus is going unchecked or, you know, we're having a hard time issuing discipline or removing problem people off the bus, due to the fact that we have limited, you know, access to names and pictures. And by just going on vague accusations and just profiling people, what we think someone looks like, also opens us up for trouble. So moving forward, if this goes forward, we're definitely gonna need a way to maybe have the kids register with, with us.
Sure.
I think, you know, the school buses have an arrangement where, you know, they can, names can be shared with the school buses. But as, you know, the city buses, we don't have any recourse or any way to go after and protect the citizens and everybody else that's on that bus and provide a good product for the entire community. And that's what we really would need moving forward.
And one of the things that I, that I can do, you mentioned Sheboygan, so I mean, we certainly can reach out to some of our peers who have that to see what their, you know, practices are, again, as we're refining this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and it's like anything else, you know, it's the 90-10 rule or something like, I mean, 90% of the kids are fine, but that 10%, and Sergeant Nelson probably tested that too, like, what his profession, that it's, you know, they're the ones that cause the problems for everyone.
And you said that they had success using the phone as a pass?
Yes.
In Sheboygan?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a different vendor than we do. We're gonna check with our vendor to see if they are able to do that. But we don't have a long-term contract with this vendor, so we could always change potentially as well.
Are there any other areas or districts that have this type of arrangement that you know of that have had similar situations and found successful solutions?
I know that they have a revenue agreement in Green Bay as well, but I haven't talked to them specifically about this.
Okay.
So.
There's not a lot of them, and that was one of the things when we started out. But we said, we oversimplified it, because it's like, if we see someone coming on the bus that looks to be of school age, we trust that they're school age. We don't check their IDs or anything like that. And we do that just because it made it simpler to board the bus. We didn't want it to become a chore. But with these issues, we have to do something.
Yeah.
We have to have an alternative to the phones, because not every kid's gonna have a phone. It seems like they all do, but there's always that, a group that wouldn't, and we have to be fair to, to the kids that don't have phones as well.
I could ask two questions. One is, and I think you may not have this answer this evening, but I believe the county has just recently approved a grant to do some study on the impact. But that is, you know, the intent of the program was to, one of the factors was to help with attendance, as well as students getting back and forth to, you know, school and employment and this kind of thing. So has it helped? And I guess, again, that county grant that was recently approved, but I don't even know if that's being tracked. Number two, the question number two is, it's, it's two parts. So the state statute that allows this to occur is the 121.54, Part 1 and 2 regarding the city option, that also speaks to the school not being required to provide that transportation if there is a public transit, except for those hazardous transportation areas. And it's my understanding that a significant portion of this is based more at one school over the other, and that would be north, whereas west is actually serving a number of students, a significant number of students, who are being bused because it's crossing Highway 41, as opposed to north, again, where that more dense population is, right? And it also talks about if the school elects some, but not all, to provide that bus thing, it has to be reasonable and uniform in that minimum distance. So a couple of years ago, we had, Mr. Davis, I'm sorry you weren't here then.
Dave wasn't.
We talked about, you know, looking at that map, because your predecessor indicated that it was known where those numbers of the hazardous transportation areas were being served. And it seems like we're now forced to reduce that capacity at north because of the higher demand and need. And perhaps, and I'm not saying that correlation is causation, but perhaps, because there are fewer needs at west, because they're already being serviced by that hazardous transportation area, there's less demand. So I guess those are some questions that relate to some of the addressing, like the crowding, because, you know, I've seen the videos, and I don't know who else has looked at that. But it's, it's very disturbing. And it seems to be a very numbers and crowding oriented, and that's what they've had to do, is to reduce at north the capacity versus at west. So those are just some things that I think we should have some, look see on some of those mapped areas of what, what is being served based on that statute versus those that aren't. It's kind of an equity issue.
Can I ask you a clarification? What's a hazardous transportation area?
That would be like, we bus people from, who would normally, if they were within walking distance, but had to cross Highway 41, something like that.
And two miles, two miles is a walking distance is kind of a-
Or maybe areas that don't have sidewalk or things of that.
Right, if there's no sidewalk, that's another one.
Okay. And, and you're saying with north, we're serving less people?
More.
Okay.
You're serving, we, the transit, the, the school busing program, the free transit is serving more.
Okay, you said something about a reduced, but, okay, but fewer-
But a reduced capacity has had to be implemented because of some of these other issues going on, while at the same time, more are being served by the school district required transportation at west. So it's, it's, it's a question of, again, I think, looking closely at that.
What's that statute?
It's 121.54, sections 1 and 2.
121.54.
It's called the city option.
The city option?
I actually just read it this week. We also have a policy, an R.O. policy about hazardous transportation. I should look it up real quick, but I did read it through my own channel.
I guess from my perspective, I won't oversimplify this. The problem is, the problem exists at north. If we could just get a little short-term help, maybe have a teacher walk through the bus before it leaves, and, you know, let's just fight some short-term help right away, or, or the dean of students, or whoever it is, I think. I think, I think Steve and Jim's point is, is the way I'm seeing it, please correct me if I'm wrong, we just need some short-term help, saying, hey, kids, knock it off. I don't think this is a gamestopper, but we can't have our citizens getting roughed up on the buses because of the, because of the students riding them. I mean, we serve the whole community. And, so I think if we can just get a little short-term help, I think that's what- short-term help, I think that's what you're looking for, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the biggest hope we have, I mean, obviously, active participation at, you know, we're basically, you know, doing that right now, right? So either Russ or I will go out there and we'll count, you know, we'll count how many people on the bus, allow for seat capacity, maybe one or two extra. So that does help and it's helped the drivers, it's given them a position to where they are, feel that they can control their own bus. But I think what we really need is a way to, you know, address those that are causing the problem and there being actions, holding people accountable for what they're doing on these buses, that's I think.
If I can interject too, my SRO has been up there pretty much after school for at least a half hour or so assisting there also and making sure that there's no issues boarding the bus, so.
And I, my, and I haven't been up there to, to see it, but I, I think our dean of students or APs are also working with liaison like in that space. So as kids, prior to kids getting on the bus, you know, I think that, that's been an area of focus for us is my understanding at this point.
But Steve, didn't, didn't you share with me last week that we've had to limit capacity at north to 40, whereas it's like 50 at west because of this? It's, it's...
Yeah, yeah, basically, we've, at north, I mean, the demand at north is twice as much, the students, there's twice as many students that, that use the public transit system to get home. But because of what's going on, the buses out of north, we've limited it to seating capacity. You know, the west bus has had as many probably as 50. A transit bus can seat, a 40 footer can seat, you know, 39, 40 people and there's room for 20 people standing. So we've, you know, we haven't had issues, we've, we've been to west, we've observed it, a little pushing getting on the bus, but as sort of that, it hasn't been bad and everybody's gone along. At north, we've had some serious issues. So yes, in order to safely, A, the people around the bus, the students that are on the bus and the driver, you know, we've had to, you know, cut back to basically 40.
Jim, did you say that the vouchers or the bus passes are issued by the schools? Or they, they get them at school?
Yeah, if we went to a program like that, like, like I think Dr. Davis can check into that with Sheboygan, but we talked to their transit manager and, yes, he said that they would, basically, so they hand out the information to the kids that tells them how to download the app and to get their pass and register. So basically, they register on their phone, but if they don't have a phone, then they go to their school, I'm assuming it's somebody at their school, and then they verify that they don't have a phone and they help them get a physical pass, which is also, they register that then. So then if they do cause a problem and they have to suspend them, they know exactly who that person is and then they'll revoke their pass and then they'll share that information with their drivers that this person's been suspended.
So at the start of the school year, the schools give a, a basically Excel spreadsheet with all the students and their student ID. And then the transit system then would issue, so you, basically, they would be purchasing for free, you know, on the app, a pass, right? And if they're, if they're still no phone, then you'd get a paper pass. But, you know, everyone comes back and I think that's kind of the agreement you guys have with Cobuson is that, you know, they register with us and therefore we would have a means to come back and, and go to someone and say, I'm going to revoke your, your pass and that way our drivers, you know, and then we're going to have to have everybody show their, their phone or their ID to get on the bus. At least that way we have an internal way to control what's going on the buses instead of depending on, you know, you guys in the, you know, at the police department.
So there is a technology fix to this, potentially.
Do we know the cost of it?
No, well, it depends which vendor we have, so no, we don't know exactly.
Okay.
Has the redu-, excuse me, has the reduction helped, I mean, at 40? Have there been issues since we made that change or no?
Uh, we've had issues, but not to the extent, individual, small-scale issues. We had, I don't know what breaking down into it, but yeah, we've had a, you know, we had one assault with four middle school students, someone trying to get to work, been a bullying instance, there's a small things here or there. Not that small, I don't mean insignificant, but not to the scale we had since the big incident.
It's like a water hose when you gink it, right? There are those who end up getting left behind after the second bus, the tripper bus, because I've been out there, I've had to give kids rides home because they couldn't get on the first one, couldn't get on the second one. There was like up to 20 kids waiting for that next bus a half hour later at 4:00. So it's just basically kind of pushing that demand off and then maybe some of the kids will say, oh, I'm just going to go ahead and walk home, or others are still gathered there waiting. So it's not a true fix, just kind of pushes it out. But it may minimize some of the incidents on the bus.
It gives us a position to control what's happening on our buses and thus making it safer. Are there kids that are left behind? Yes, but when we discuss it in our staff meetings, you face with a decision. You know, I'd rather have the call of, hey, my kid had to wait an extra half hour versus my kid got stuck on a bus and couldn't get off in the middle of a giant fight.
Exactly.
And we've had, and, and we've had a couple instances, not only on the bus, at the transit center as well. So that's, you know, once they get downtown, then we also have to deal with it there as well where they're interacting with the public and so we've, that, that's where we just, you know, there's the school thing, but then we also have, once they get on the bus, like you said, then they've kind of become our problem and the city's problem, so we got them on the bus and then wherever between the school and their house, whatever happens between there, then obviously us and the police department have to deal with, so.
Sorry, one more question. I know we have to move on. I just had a question about moving forward with the budget. It was initially 104, now it's 147. One-third city, one-third...
Sure.
Do we know if that private donor is going to be willing to donate again to, to offset the cost?
Yeah, um, well, I'll let some of the council jump in, but that's the third part of the discussion and that's more of a discussion for, for the bodies, but I just wanted to provide the information. The current revenue agreement, the initial one was $93,500 a year, and then we added that tripper for about $11,000 a year. Our average fare, our current cash fare is a dollar fifty. However, we do sell monthly passes, quarterly passes, so it's not truly a dollar fifty because, you know, you can ride as much as you want with that third monthly pass. So it's more like somewhere in the dollar range once you figure all that in. So I'm just saying that if, and we'll update these numbers and share them at the end of the year, but just based on our estimate, if we did a dollar per ride, that's, you know, at the number of rides, that's what it would be, plus the tripper. And, and the pilot was initially funded, or the agreement was, a third city, a third school district, a third private donor. The first year, there was a private donor that contributed the third. The second year with COVID, the city pushed that back a year and then the city manager agreed to hold, hold that private donor amount back because of COVID. And then we filled in with some of our other, you know, CARES Act and ARPA Fund, stuff like that. So we covered it the second year. In the third year, the only private funds I'm aware of is the Boys and Girls Club contributed $3,000.
Yeah, so per the agreement, the district ended up cutting the check for the balance of the, the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the first year, I think we used CARES money, we moved the donation from the first year. We actually extended it from two to three years and so we applied CARES money that we received through the feds for the first year private donation. We felt, given everything, that was the appropriate thing to do. And then the second year, we applied the, the donation, but that was the only real donation we got, aside from the generosity of the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, thank you.
So you can imagine with the, you know, planned concentration of the larger consolidated school, Val Phillips, you know, it's probably better we address this now in a holistic way before that consolidation occurs.
I think Ms., I think Ms. Hanson wanted to go.
Yeah, can I jump back to, did attendance rise? Did you see any difference when adding this?
Truancy wise?
Truancy wise, or getting people, getting kids to school, did you, can you tell a difference numerically?
So my understanding, again, this is prior to me, to me being here, so with, with COVID, it's pretty hard to track kind of attendance and where we had been historically. This year, we're two months in, so, you know, I, I don't think we have really clean numbers on this as we move forward. I, I think it's, for us, and again, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, as we're, we're moving forward with it, but historically, I think we were really looking at it from an access standpoint, to be able to get kids to programs or get kids home. Let's, so there, there's a lot of other factors that go into attendance and truancy and like that type of thing. So I, I think to draw a direct line from like attendance and truancy to, you know, with the bus, I think would be, it's pretty convoluted, so, but that's...
Did you get any feedback from students that it is a major help to them?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything formally that we've gotten other than, you know, kids talking with their feet saying, you know, I'm, there's a lot more ridership certainly. So I, I think, you know, certainly kids that are within two miles of the, two miles of the school that are able to get rides, you know, I think that's helpful, along with just trips to, you know, other organizations, Boys and Girls Club and that type of thing.
Two quick questions. In terms of the schools part in this, is there regular or every now and then education done with the students about, you know, at a kid on the bus? I know that seems pretty straightforward, but sometimes it takes reminding them how to act when you're on the bus. Second, when a student is suspended from the bus, are their parents informed? Because I feel like that could help alleviate some of that if they're, they might not even be aware that their kids are causing problems on the bus.
Yeah, to the, to the second part, I'll let Sergeant Nelson answer that, but.
Okay, to the second part, yes, they are notified. The dealings that we've had this year where the kids are getting disorderly conduct tickets, they are, the parents are also notified of that, so, yeah.
Yeah, and from a school education standpoint, I'd have to check, have to check with the schools and see, you know, that, what that would typically look like would be a general announcement or at like beginning of the year, school, class meetings, like that type of thing. So, you know, there, there's a limited amount of effectiveness in that and the, the transfer from hearing an announcement in school to, you know, behaviors, you know, I would say is something we, I can check on, but I, I think it's, you know, potentially a little bit more of, you know, let's get a database to know, you know, who, who the students are that are riding and, and maybe do some direct, some direct conversations with them and, and parents, I think would make sense.
Well, the, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Matt, I've got to leave in a minute, I've got another engagement, so I'll, I'll shut up and I'm sure Matt and everybody else in the council is glad I'm leaving because I usually talk the most, but, three things. You know, I'm going to leave it up to Davis and Roloff to, to negotiate this deal. I mean, we, we don't want to do any of that, but I'm not interested in doing this again if we, if we can't solve the violence and, I mean, the Donny Brooks, I mean, that's just, that, that dog just isn't going to hunt in my world. So I mean, if we, if we can't come up with a solution between you two guys to solve that problem, help out transit, help out the cops, I'm not interested in keeping this program going. Just that simple. I mean, it's affecting everybody in the community and that's just not right. So number two, obviously, the program is somewhat successful. I mean, what, I mean, a third of our customers are these kids, right? So I mean, that was the whole goal, to get these kids to, to and from school, to and from work at no cost to them, especially the kids that need this, right? So, so I'm all for this problem if you can work out those issues and obviously if you two can work out the money program, but we, this, this Donny Brook and roughing up our, our citizens isn't going to work for me at all, so, I mean, that's...
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what you're referring to. Is that a student's name?
No, Donny Brook, a brawl, a fight on the bus, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yep.
I'm wondering something. Okay.
Nope. So that's where I'm at. I, I think it's a great program. I think, I think Jim stated it best that this is helping out 90% and we've got 10% of kids that probably need a little coaching and 1% that probably need to start walking. So thank you all for this, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And Ms. Alaji referenced a, a school interpretation of the hazardous area where, is that something you could share with us?
Yeah, it's in our, if you go to our website, McUnder Policy, it is administrative guideline 8600, not A. I'll say that again. It's administrative guideline, so the code is AG8600A.
We can email that out.
I also, I have a question about kind of the behaviors that you're talking about. I keep hearing that it's a pickup point. Is that a correct understanding that it's not necessarily behavior problems coming to school or maybe going to the library over the summer months, if they're going to work, it's just when it's a large group of students together at the end of school days?
Yeah, we've had, I mean, we have a large group of students coming in, it seems to be most of the kids going home. So we've had crowded buses and, you know, capacity, getting the kids to school, the issues we've had, basically 100% of the issues we've had is all in the afternoon.
Thank you, that's what I wondered, it sounded like that, but I wanted to say. Thank you.
I know we talked a lot about the, the issues and it's, it's, those are important. It's not a roadblock, it's a speed bump, right? It's, it's something that can be overcome or at least addressed and, and looked at if, if the parties are willing. The data that, that Jim's collected was exactly what the original intent was amongst the two bodies, was, let's try it, let's see, is there a need, let's track it. Does it help? There was some intent of, does it help getting kids to school? There was this idea was, was there a barrier that, you know, dead of winter, could they not get there because, because of something? And so we had some hopes that there was some, you know, maybe some increase in attendance rates because of, of something that we were partnering on. I'm hopeful that there's some, some interest level on continuing the partnership. It's, it seems to be, there's a significant number of students who, who need some help getting home and getting to school, but getting home a lot as well. I think council's generally receptive to the idea of, of continuing the partnership if, if there's some willingness on your side too. And as Miller, Mr. Miller said, you know, it's up to, up to these two gentlemen to figure out the fine details and, and bring it back, but this was, this is meeting the intent of what we had, had tried to do to, to start and I guess we'll see if there's a 2.0, right? I guess that's, that's, where do we go from here? Is, is there a 2.0?
I agree, remember, kids are residents too, right? We shouldn't speak of them as other, I mean, they're, they're here too. We happen to be subsidizing their use of the bus, but, right?
You're a part of the public.
Yeah, I have two of them at home.
So appreciate you guys' willingness to just go in on this with us and, and see if it could help.
It's really a community issue and we talk about, you know, it takes a village to raise a child and I think this is a good example of that, but I am really concerned about the behavior, misbehavior on the part of some students. I, I totally agree, there need to be some consequences and whatever can be done technologically or in some other way to do that, I think would be very helpful, so. Any final thoughts? We're about where we thought we'd be in terms of an ending time and I know people have other things to do. Christopher?
Yeah, I'll speak up for the first time tonight. So echo what Mr. Muber already said. I, I would agree that, I, I think where you're going with it is the idea that it has helped a lot of people and it's helped a lot of students. And so we can talk about other areas that we can improve and I appreciate that, but it makes me happy seeing how many people are riding it and how many people are getting the support that they need, getting to the places that they need. And so I think that, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the other stuff, which is very important. I think that's the, the message that I'm trying to remember from that is that it's a program that has helped. So thank you all for...
And I agree with what they both said.
All right. Thank you, Steve. We have an announcement, I believe that comes from the mayor. Youth member seats to the City of Oshkosh Boards and Commissions.
It's just a reminder that we did add the capacity to each of our boards and commissions to allow for two youth ex officio members, and so those are non-voting members for our boards and commissions. It doesn't include necessarily some of our quasi-judicial, but certainly we have like 22 different boards and commissions and the length of that term is through the school year and they participate, they just don't vote, and that application can be found, I believe we have it on our city website under government boards and commissions for a list of those different boards as well as the application. So just to share that there's an opportunity for youth to become involved, whether it's on the transit board, the traffic board, the parks board, and there are a lot of opportunities there for student engagement. And we had started that program before the COVID shut down and this was the first year of full in-person that we could offer that again. So I just wanted to share that. Two per advisory board.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any requests for future agenda items for whenever our next meeting would be? We'll go with Mrs. Carlin and then Mr. Ford.
I would like to add to the agenda, an assessment or analysis of the mental wellness resources for both students and community members and take a look at what we have and where... and where maybe the gaps are, or opportunities for providing more services. And I would also like to, you know, we don't have a crisis center, so if somebody's in crisis, they have to call 911, and then an ambulance is deployed, and that costs the taxpayers a lot of money. So, I would just like to have a discussion on whether or not it would be in the future feasible for the city and, and school district to work together to kind of come up with some sort of solution that will provide urgent care assistance for people that are experiencing a mental crisis. So...
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin and Mr. Ford.
Yeah. Obviously, I think we're probably going somewhat along the same lines. We all know that a lot of what affects student achievement occurs outside the classroom. And I really think it's important that we, as a collaborative body, talk a little bit about ways maybe the city can do things that are helping address some of those things impacting achievement that occur outside the classroom.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any future agenda items? I don't think we have a date for another meeting, but it would be good, I think, if we could get another one in before...
I think you have your ear this...
If we could get another meeting in, perhaps before the April election, or before the new council members and the new board members take over.
I was just going to, one just came to me for potentially a topic for future agenda item, homelessness, particularly as it affects our children, our students, because that's a rising number. But I know it's just a topic we've been addressing a lot in the council, so maybe how we can collaborate on that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Well, I'm sure by the time there's a meeting set, that our two leaders here, Mr. Roloff and Dr. Davis, will entertain other agenda items to be added. I want to thank all the council members for being here tonight, the school board members, as well as the Go Transit folks, Jim and Steve, Sarah from the museum board, and thank everyone for your presentations and your engagement tonight. I think this has been a productive meeting, and I hope we will, as I said, schedule something between now and April. At this point...
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. You're a mind reader. Now, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Wait, can you get a second? Move to adjourn and a second here.
I'm...
Oh, you...
I'm...
Meeting adjourned.